Welcome to the Judiciary Committee hearing this January 28th, Tuesday morning. My name is Carl Rhodes, I'm Chair of the Committee. This is an in person Zoom meeting and it's being live streamed on YouTube as well. It includes just the one agenda, our 915 agenda. Because this is our first hearing of the year, I will, I will ask my fellow two members, the ones who are here, to introduce themselves.
I'm Mike Gabbert, representing District 21, West Oahu. Also Chair of the Agriculture and Environment Committee, aloha.
And Ludar, three other members who will be here sooner or later. As noted, this hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on demand video page of the Legislature's website at And in the unlikely event that we have a major technical failure, we'll reconvene to discuss any outstanding issues on January 30 at 9:16 a.m. here in 016. But we will try to work through any technical problems we have today if it happens. So if you can hang around until we figure that out. We do have a two minute time limit on answers to, on testimony. But if you can stay around for questions, that would be great. Oftentimes, I and other members do have questions. Okay, first up today is SB 94, SB 94. This increases the mandatory minimum jail sentence for a first conviction of knowingly or intentionally violating a temporary restraining order from 48 to 72 hours. First up on SB 94 is Darcy Forster for the Office of Public Defender. Good morning.
Morning. Aloha, Chair Rhodes and Vice Chair Gabbert. So we haven't submitted our written testimony. I just want to highlight that we do have two different issues that we wanted to bring up. We are opposing increasing the mandatory minimum from 48 to 72 hours. We just, quite frankly, don't see what the efficacy is going to be for that. The current 48 hours seems to be effective. And we're able to process cases efficiently with that mandatory minimum. One of our concerns is that it just lumps everybody into one category without any distinction between a simple text message. So a violation of a temporary restraining order can be a, what single text message saying, "I'm sorry, I miss you, I love you." Or it can be the whole other side of the spectrum where it involves, you know, words of threats. And we just think there should be a distinction. If the, if we're looking at maybe increasing it to 72 hours, I think we would request maybe looking at separating them in some way and using some sort of filter. What that is, I don't know at this time, but that's something that I can certainly think about if it moves forward. But our other issue has to do with the mental health counseling. If you note in our testimony, we just wanted to tweak the language. The way it's written, we, we don't think that it's going to be helpful. So we have some suggested language. And we suggest that it be amended to say undergo a mental health assessment and comply with the recommendations of the assessment. Because people are at different levels, different spectrums, different needs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Angelina Mercado, Executive Director for the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Good morning.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair Committee Members. I'm Angie Mercado, Executive Director of the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We are the Association of Domestic Violence Programs in the state, representing 16 organizations and 25 programs. And we respectfully ask that this measure be deferred. There are about seven other bills addressing protection order and TRO violations already, including House and Senate companions. One of the issues that we have with this bill is that it really only addresses violations on the TRO side. And that's 586-4. There's also 586-11, which is what addresses violations of protection orders. And we also have an issue, so that's incomplete, right? You know, and so the other statutes won't address 586-4 and 586-11. And, you know, we do have an issue and concern with the mental health assessment. Our biggest issue is that, well, we don't have enough mental health professionals in the state. We don't have enough mental health professionals in the state who are qualified to understand, diagnose, and address the power and control dynamics that are very specific to domestic violence. That's not to say that folks who are perpetrators of domestic violence don't also have other mental health issues and concerns. But what we're concerned about is that then that becomes a conflation of causality. It's that your mental health, you know, diagnosis is the cause for your, for your violence and for your abusive behaviors. And that is not exactly true. So that's, that's a concern. And then we don't know, like the statute, the language doesn't really say what to do and who will conduct those assessments. And quite frankly, what often happens is that there's mental health coercion that happens on the side for victims. And so they are being told, oh, you act crazy. Or there's like the whole like trope of women being crazy. And we think that that's an unintended consequence of this language. And so we think that it just be deferred until we can like add and, well, you know, follow the other measures that might completely address this. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next is Alan Johnson, Chair for Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. In support, Lindsay Drayer. In opposition, Deanna Espinis. Also in opposition, Michael Older. In support. Monique Ibarra, Domestic Violence Action Center. In opposition. That's all the written testimony we had submitted on SB 94. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 94? Seeing non-members' questions? Okay, I don't have any either. Let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, SB 115. Relating to attachment and execution of real property, increases the real property exemption amount for attachment or execution. First up on SB 115 is Marvin S. Dang for Hawaii Financial Services Association. Good morning.
Good morning, Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members. Marvin Dang for the Hawaii Financial Services Association. We offer comments on this bill. We just want to, among other things, clarify that this bill does not deal with exemptions against real property taxes. This is an exemption against claims of creditors. We offer some policy issues that you might want to consider if you do pass this bill. One is that the whole idea behind this statute originally, I believe it was like a homestead exemption. And it would protect a person's home. The way the statute is currently written is there is no limitation in that regard. Someone could use this exemption for vacant property, for commercial property, for investment property. If it's limited to a person's personal residence, perhaps that is something that could be done. And on page two, we offer other suggestions such as limiting the frequency of the use of this particular exemption. Thank you. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Next up is Stephanie Sakamoto for Hawaii Credit Union League. Comments, okay? Next is Linda Nakamura for Mortgage Bankers Association of Hawaii. Also with comments, Bill Plum, Vice Chair, Collection Law Section of the Hawaii State Bar Association. In support. Tiffany Ajima or Mihoko Ito for Hawaii Bankers Association. Okay, comments. Lynn Murakami Akatsuka. In support. Dawn Waku Kau in support. And Yulani Nipo also in support. That's everybody who signed up for SB 115. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 115? If not, Members' questions?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. Marvin Dang, you're the only one who testified, really, sorry. So the reality is that this will only affect unsecured creditors. Because mortgage holders who are secured creditors are already, well, they're secured. So they, for that extent of their security, this will not affect them, correct?
It would not affect them if they had the mortgage lien on record, yes.
Right. And, and also any lienors who, like judgment lienors who have, so these are basically those who are unsecured, like credit card, right?
It would be, so you mentioned the judgment creditors. If the judgment creditor actually recorded the, recorded the judgment at the Bureau of Advances, it would be a lien. If they have a judgment that's not recorded, they would be an unsecured creditor. If there is other debt, let's say credit cards or personal loans that, that have not gone to suit but are delinquent, they would be at risk.
And in fact, the, the law has not changed for over 50 years at the $20,000. Because, you know, I've been trying to increase the exemption to match at least cost of living. So this is really a modest increase, yes? I mean, because otherwise, if in the, well, like Texas, an entire homestead is actually exempt regardless of how much the value is. If did what you said and just did a homestead exemption regardless of value, that would actually increase the attachment exemption rather than this modest increase of $90,000 regardless of whether or not it's a homestead.
Each state is different. Each state has different laws. For example, under the bankruptcy code of the United States, the exemption is $25,000. With regard to the fact that there might not have been changes over the years, yes, that's why, for example, the Collection Law Section of the Hawaii State Bar Association is offering a suggestion of $50,000. But if we're going to go through, after let's say 50 years of not making changes, perhaps we can look at clarifying what the true intent of this was. That is limited, restricted to one person who can use it, provided that person has this as their primary personal residence.
Yeah, I mean, to start over, like I'm seeing in your, in terms of people who inherited property. So, but they end up having credit card debt. If we don't have this kind of increase, they are basically going to be back with only at most at $20,000, which is not enough to even buy a brand new car.
Yes, that's, that's why we didn't object. We're offering comments. We didn't suggest the $1 amount. I think really comes down to what the committee based on input from various state authorities PO is important. The bill would, there's, there's two different exemptions here. One would, both would triple the amount of the exemption. What we're suggesting is perhaps there'd be just one exemption regardless of whether or not you fall in the first category, which is you're 65 years or older or ahead of household or if in the second gather or you're none of those. Perhaps there'd be one, whether it's $50,000 or some other figure. At least if we can clarify the, the intent, the purpose of it, then I think we perhaps as a matter of policy have accomplished what I think analysts think would be useful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
My comment here is homestead exemption of unlimited amount. Thank you.
Like Florida?
Like Florida and Texas.
Yep. Other questions? I do have sort of a practical, not having practiced law question. So if, no matter what the attachment exemption is, as a debt collector or someone, as an attorney who's collecting the debt, can you, do you actually take the house and you just give them the $90,000 in cash or the, whatever, whatever it is now, I forgot. The amount in cash, they don't, they don't necessarily get to keep the house, right?
There's a number of ramifications for this particular statute. The attachment and execution part of it would, as, has been used in, not only in a way, but in other states, would be used through the court process. Where there would be a forced sale of the property. And then from the sales proceeds, there would be various creditors paid off, as the Senator alluded to, there would be the mortgagees, the lenders who have recorded mortgages. Then perhaps a judgment creditor who had recorded the lien. And then if there's anything left over, that would be quote like equity, then you would deduct the exemption. And if there's anything else left over, that would be available. The interplay.
But there's no, there's no guarantee that you keep a house.
No, there is no guarantee that you would keep the property under any circumstance under this.
Other questions, Members? If not, thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and move on.
Thank you, Senator.
Next bill, SB 117. This protects individuals who declare sexual misconduct from defamation lawsuits unless the claims are proven to be made with malice. First up on 117 is Society for Human Resource Management Hawaii. In opposition, next is Michael Older with comments. Nonohe Botello in opposition. That's everybody who signed up on SB 117. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 117? Okay, Members, there's no one to ask questions of, so I guess we'll move on to the next bill, which is SB 121. This proposes an amendment to Article 6, Section 3 of the Hawaii State Constitution to allow the Senate more time to confirm judicial appointments typically around when we're not in regular session. First up on this is Rodney Miley, Administrative Director of the Courts, with comments. And that's the only person who signed up on SB 121. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 121? Seeing none, same situation. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill. SB 124, another conan proposing amendments to Article 4, Sections 4 and 6 of the Hawaii State Constitution regarding reapportionment. This proposes a constitutional amendment to specify that reapportionment should be based on the resident population as counted in the most recent Senate Census for the respective reapportionment year rather than the permanent resident population. First up on 124 is Reese Nakamura, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Rhodes and Members of the Committee. I'm Reese, Deputy Attorney General Reese Nakamura. We have submitted comments to this bill. Basically, our comment is that the Decennial Report, the Census Report for the Year of the Reapportionment should be used in the, in the language of the amendment and the conam ballot question. Because we, it's a possibility that there might be a delay in getting the census for that particular year. And if we just use the language where it's the most recent, that could be the previous one from 10 years ago. So that's our comments, but be glad to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jen Kagiwata, Council Member for Hawaii, excuse me, Hawaii County Council. In opposition. Next is Scott Smart. Good morning.
Good morning Senator, Members of the Committee. I'm Scott Smart, testifying on my own behalf. Been involved in this issue since 2001 apportionment. Went to the public hearings of the reapportionment committee and found out that even though I was a Hawaii citizen, I voted in Hawaii, pay Hawaii state resident income tax. Because I was married to a service member, I was not deemed a permanent resident of the state. And digging this further, it's difficult to find why this concept of permanent resident became part of our constitution. I haven't been able to find out why. It seems very anomalous that we'll take one segment of the population and say, you're not, you're not to be considered part of the representative body. You know, districts should be set up to be roughly equal in population. And you could say 100 years ago, military lived on ship, they were on barracks. Today, that's not the case. We live in the community. I live in Mililani. We live all over the state. Now, the most recent reapportionment, they went to the military, they said, how many military personnel and dependents, family members are there? They got numbers. But there's no way to assign those numbers to census tracts. So they go, they take an arbitrary method, they say, well, we'll take some from here, we'll take some from there. There's no basis for that. Meanwhile, if you're here as an undocumented immigrant, no problem. You're in the census numbers, we count you for representation. So a basic concept of fairness, it seems improper that some geographic regions of our state have many more people in a representative and senate district than others. And for that reason, I strongly support this constitutional amendment. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next is Shannon Matson on Zoom, maybe?
They are here on Zoom.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Thank you so much for your time and taking my testimony. I do have written comments. I'm going to try to get through them and add a little bit in the time allotted. But I just wanted to make sure that this was on the oral record as well. I've testified before you guys on this topic in the past. My name is Shannon Matson. I'm a resident of Hawaii Island. And I did follow the last reapportionment and redistricting process extremely closely. And I've testified in opposition to this bill in the past, and I'm still in strong opposition. While I do hear what the previous testifier is saying, my concern is with my district of Puna and the fact that there are thousands of people that I believe were not properly counted in the last couple of censuses. And that's for a variety of reasons, many which I know are far out of your control. But considering our rural area, we, we don't get, most of us don't get mail. We have PO boxes and the census will not send their packets to PO boxes. They will send little cards that encourage people to log on and participate in the census, but there's no way that we know who is doing that and who isn't. A lot of folks in my rural area do not have internet access. Many of them don't have phones. Yes, census takers were present in our area, but especially due to COVID, the access was somewhat limited. We have over 4,000 lots in, in my neighborhood with 75 miles of unpaved roads. Many of those lots are three acre parcels that are fenced. They have dogs, they have other things that prevent the census takers from accessing them. So we know that there are, again, hundreds to thousands of people that were not counted in the Puna area. And yet we are still the fastest growing district in the state.
Thank you very much.
Am I out of time? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Next up is David Hunt in opposition. Corey Harden in opposition. Andrew Crossland in opposition. Darlene Scuncella in opposition. Mary True in opposition. Janet Mason in support. Jessica Kuzmaier in support. Aria Juliet Castillo, Castillo in opposition. That's everybody who signed up for SB 124. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 124? Seeing none, Members' questions? No questions? Okay, moving on. SB 175, SB 175 is another, another closed conan. This proposes an amendment to Article 6, Section 3 of the Hawaii State Constitution, increase the mandatory retirement age for state justices and judges. Currently at 70, this would raise it to 75. First up is Rod Miley, Administrative Director of the Courts. In support. Sonny Gannon, Office of Public Defender. Good morning, Representative.
Good morning, Sonny Gannon, Deputy Public Defender. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Of course, there's differing ideas about this, both in the Office of the Public Defender and within the bar. The official position is in support, considering the ages of judges and how we are losing talent in the judiciary. Of course, this could be decided again by voters in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Caroline Keteral, Director for Executive Office on Aging. In support. Next is Kat Brady, Community Alliance on Prisons. Good morning.
Good morning, Members of the Judiciary Committee. Happy New Year. Community, Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in strong support of this measure. You know, 70 is like the new 50. So what really concerns me is losing all that institutional knowledge that's on the bench. And we think that's really important. So just, I did a lot of research on Ballantpedia. I'll give you just the Cliff Notes. 16 states have no retirement age. One state has 90 years. That's Vermont. Eight states have 75 years as retirement. 19 states have 70 as a retirement. And six states have retirement ages between 71 and 74. And some states actually say if somebody ages out, becomes 70 before their term is up, they can finish their term or they can finish a certain number of years of their term. So we strongly support this. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next is Henry Curtis, Executive Director of Life of the Land. In support. Next is Lynn Murakami Akatsuka. In support. Brent Colvis in opposition. Michael Older in opposition. Carolyn Eaton in support. And that's everyone who signed up on SB 175. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 175? Seeing none, Members' questions? Well, it's pretty straightforward, so I guess we'll move on to the next bill, which is SB 173. This requires the judiciary to establish a three-year pilot program to provide free childcare services to minor children of parties and witnesses who are attending court hearings in the First Circuit. Requires the judiciary to submit reports to the Legislature and appropriate funds. First up on 173 is Rodney Miley, Administrative Director of the Courts. With comments. Next is Darcy Forster, Deputy Public Defender. In support, okay? Next is Ryan Yimani, Director of Department of Human Services, State of Hawaii. In support. Next is Angelina Mercado, Executive Director of Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. In support, thank you. Next is Kristin Hara, Domestic Violence Coordinator for Child and Family Services Service. In support. Next is Deanna Espinis. In support. Benjamin Rose in support. Michael Older in support. Lindsay Drayer in support. That's everybody who signed up to testify on SB 173. Would anyone else like to testify on SB 173? Seeing none, Members' questions? For the Public Defender, can you explain sort of the logistics of why they're assuming, I mean, you supported, why, why will, why will this help?
Oh, we have so many clients and witnesses and complaining witnesses. All come in different ranges and different income brackets. It is not unusual for a witness, a complainant witness, or even a defendant to not have a childcare option and bring their child to court. And then there's a scramble. What are we going to do? How are we going to accommodate the parent? For, you know, we, we might ask a colleague to watch the child or we have to get permission for the child to come in. But if the child gets fussy, they have to leave the courtroom. For, you know, we we might ask a colleague to watch the child or we have to get permission for the child to come in, but if the child gets fussy, they have to leave the courtroom. It can be very disruptive. Um and it can be really, really stressful on the parties in cases. Um sometimes childcare just bottoms out and you lose somebody at the last minute. But if you are required to be in court, you do not have a choice. You must show up. Whether you've got a child in tow, or I've seen uh situations where there's three children in tow, you know, and they're. It's a stressed out mother with three children, there's a subpoena or they were ordered to come. And everyone's just scrambling to to figure out what are we gonna do for them. So it's it's a real thing that happens on a regular basis.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh any other questions on S B one seventy-three? Okay, seeing on, we'll move on to S B two sixty-one. This increases the amount each juror or prospective jurors paid for each day of actual attendance at court. Um it's been. Uh it would increase it from thirty dollars. Uh which it is currently to fifty dollars a day. Uh first up is Michelle Acosta, Deputy Chief. Testifying for the judiciary. Oh, sorry. Morning. Okay. Okay, in support, next to Starship Forester, Deputy Public Defender. Okay, thank you, in support, next is Addison Lulisan, Councilmember for Kauai County. In support, Mark Morikami, President of Y State Bar Association in support, oh. In support. Okay, thank you. Uh and Michael Older, also in support. That's all the written testimony we have in S B two sixty-one. Would anyone else like to testify in S B two sixty-one? Seeing on members, questions? Um let's see, for the Y State Bar Association, do you mind coming up for a sec? Right now, the bill says um. From thirty dollars a day to fifty dollars a day. Um is fifty dollars a day enough? That doesn't sound like very much to me.
That that that's more of a judiciary appropriation and navigating the judiciary's budget with uh uh the the Senate. I do think that there's a steep cost associated with uh jury service. It is a core bedrock of our judicial system and so. Um it has been thirty dollars for a long time. Um uh a lot of our colleagues and citizens and neighbors uh opt out of. Uh jury service. Uh traditionally, jurors, you know, we we wanna incentivize folks, it is. How we make decisions, certainly in the criminal context, uh and um our inability to. Um and I don't know if you've ever been in jury service, but the the judges have, you know, have to corral people who don't wanna be there. And so this is one step. Um uh I I think it's well overdue. Um I don't wanna get into the judiciary's budget allocations and how much they're asking from this court.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Members? Okay, seeing now, let's go and move on to the next bill, which is S B two s- two sixty, two sixty-two, two sixty-two. Relating to prospective jurors, authorizes the judiciary to determine the format of the juror qualification form and the means of its delivery and return. Removes the requirement that the form be mailed. First up on this is Michelle Acosta or Dana Nakasato for the state. Good morning, again.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Michelle Acosta, Deputy Chief Court Administrator for the First Circuit here on behalf of judiciary. Um we have submitted written testimony in strong support. Again, this is part of the judiciary's legislative package. Um taking notice of some of the written testimony that was submitted for this bill, I wanted to provide a little bit more information as to. Uh the the introduction of this bill. The judiciary has a jury management system that was implemented in two thousand and nine. We're in the process of upgrading that system to make it more efficient and more current to the processing of jury service. Um part of that system includes a portal that would allow uh members of the public to respond to the annual jury. Qualification questionnaire. Um this, because the statute reads to limitation that it must be mailed. Uh out and returned to the courts. Um the uh the uh statute is limiting. Uh the judiciary from exploring the util- uh utilization of more current technology. Um there is no uh current plan right now to implement this in the upcoming twenty twenty-six qualification, jury qualification. Mailout. We are still looking at the system and how uh that can be implemented for the use uh for the residents in Hawaii. Um as we do develop and understand the system a little bit more. We would uh be including, of course, our stakeholders uh than state Hawaii, including the the bar members and the trial divisions. Um and also taking a look at mindful of our access issues for certain populations in the state. That do not have uh easy access to internet or wifi service. And so those things will be in consideration. However, we do need the statutory amendment to allow us to. Be flexible in in implementing some of these technol- technological tools. I'm available for questions if there are any.
Great, thank you. Uh next is Darcy Forester, Deputy Public Defender.
Again, so I'm just gonna reiterate some of my comments that I made. Our biggest concern is to make sure that a. Jury pool of prospective jurors accurately reflects our communities. And um I'm really happy to hear the comments from the judiciary. To, because not everyone has access to the internet. Um we have really great jurors who come. To us who are retired and who are in college, but we need to make sure that we're not eliminating our older jurors who might have. Issues with the computer. And also we need to just make sure that we are mi- mindful that not everyone has great internet access. We heard earlier from. A lady from Puna talking about issues with um the mail service and spotty internet. So. We just wanna reiterate that we have concerns. We'd like our prospective panels to be full and fair. In terms of a representation of our community as a whole and not eliminate groups of people because of internet issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh next is Addison Lulisan, Councilmember for Kauai County Council in support. And that's everybody who signed up on S B two sixty-two. Would anyone else like to testify in S B two sixty-two? Seeing on members, questions? I do have a question for judiciary. So I guess. Uh with with the, where the statute's written now and you have to mail, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what you have to do. But if you. It's it's not clear to me from the language this is written now, whether you only have to try one way, one method. So if you emailed somebody and they. And you don't get a response or the the address is bad, then. What what's the judiciary gonna do under that circum- in those circumstances?
We do have uh situations where we do mail and the um. Uh the address may be old, people have moved on. Uh we do uh contract with a vendor that is supposed to take a look at any forwarding addresses and things like that. So we do resend out questionnaires for those. Uh situations. Um but the the way that the statute reads reads right now is that it may needs to be mailed back to us.
Right. But then if if this bill passes, then you will do what?
So.
So let me let me give you a specific hypothetical. So if you, if you, if you, you think you have a legitimate email address, you email it. You don't get a response. What what do you do?
So what we're looking at now is other jurisdictions have implemented a model where they would still mail out a postcard. The postcard and some jurisdictions will use a QR code with a a website address that people could log into. And then uh access the questionnaire from there. So we're still utilizing a mail um in terms of um sending out. The the questionnaire.
Okay, so I guess the related question is if you can't get a response with whatever method you use first, do you try again or you just give up on that person?
It depends for the reasons. If it's it's a bad address and we are able to get from the U S Postal Service a forwarding address, then we can do it. But if there's no address to be mailed to, um then we may not be able to send out.
Okay, but so if you, but if you, back to the orig- the original hypo, so if you emailed somebody, didn't get a response. Do you didn't, are are you automatically gonna try mail at that point or do you just give up?
I don't know, Senator, that we would be mailing out at the get-go. We would still be using.
No, I'm saying after, after you gotta balance on an email, what would you do? Would you, would you automatically mail to them as an, as an additional way to reach that person? Or do you just give up at that point?
I think the first step is, we're envisioning is we would mail. If we have an email address, I don't know that we're at that point yet to. Uh mail.
No, I guess I'm being very unclear. So you you I'm I'm, you start with the email. You 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 email it out, you don't get a response, or you get a response that indicates that that email is no longer valid or whatever. Then is there another step? Do you try to reach them another way? Or do you just give up and say, well, they're not available?
If I may just clarify, that the first step would be U S mail. Um because we wouldn't be able to get uh an email address from the source in which, so we get DMV and voter registration information. And that information has mailing addresses and not necessarily email for us to send out the questionnaires. So if in the event that we are able to get an email address, would probably not be at the qualification stage. So we send out the juror qualifications to all residents. And from there, we determine the minimum qualifications for statute. Age eighteen, U S citizen. From there, then we summon uh jurors, perf- prospective jurors to serve.
Okay, Senator, it sounds like you don't need this at all because you're gonna mail to them first anyway.
Well, we would need it because the statute reads right now that we can mail out. But they have to mail back. And so if we allowed um use this portal for residents.
So mail out and electronic response?
Correct.
Okay.
But Chair, I have questions when you're.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So um the Public Defender has made some good points and. My understanding when I first read this bill was that it would allow you the opportunity. To determine the form of delivery and return. Which means you folks are gonna create rules, right? On how you folks are gonna do this. Is that right? Because it sounds like the, what you said. You're gonna mail first because that's all you get from the voter registration is the mail, but you're gonna put a QR code on that. And I know a whole bunch of people who are not gonna scan that QR code. So what are you? Are you folks gonna create rules of? Of not only bouncing, but failure to respond?
So that's, that's one model is to put a QR code. Um it it's a. We want to be able to utilize the technology for people to be able to respond to their questionnaires, whether we're sending that out. With their uh hard copy questionnaire form with a QR code or a URL address for people to respond. So one model is that they can send in their hard copy if they wanted to or respond online. So that's one model.
But you are, you guys are gonna create rules, which are then gonna be sent out to the bar. And which, like, like all of your rules.
I'm not sure that we would be creating rules. I I have our review for that, but we would be creating procedures. That we would be sharing with our uh stakeholders within the community on how to, how to go about this process.
So if we pass this bill, basically it's carte blanche. You guys are gonna determine on your own without. Further public input or further bar input as to forms of delivery? Because then I have questions regarding that.
Right.
I could see the need for efficiency, but. Just knowing myself, I get tons of email and I don't get to, or my email goes to junk mail. And I'm not gonna respond, even if the email is valid.
So if I may just clarify that the the reach out, the mail out, the form for sending out the qualification is going to be still U S mail. So you would still get notice of the qualification through U S mail. But there, we have not made a decision to when to implement and how to implement. But this allows us to move in that direction when it comes time to do so. And the judiciary, of course, um is is uh cognizant of the concerns of the bar and the public. This is a major transition if the the court does or the judiciary moves in the direction of using an online portal. For um responding to uh juror qualifications. So we would want to include the stakeholders within the community. Um but also, if this is the move that we're going to be uh. Moving in that direction and implementing, that of course, we would want to educate the public on how to respond to the juror qualifications. Each year, historically and traditionally, we continue to do this. Uh we send out a press release announcing to the community that the questionnaires will be mailed out. So we would be following the same format and informing the public. That the questionnaires are becoming, that will be coming out, and this is the format or alternatives in which they can respond.
Okay, so um Chair, my request is that this bill be amended to require. That the judiciary submit rules of court like they do for everything else, like subpoena and service. So that the bar will have notice and be able to object if necessary. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't know, can we uh, can we tell the Supreme Court to make their own, to do their own rules? Seems like a separation of power. Anyway, what does?
They're asking us to be able to allow them. So that's not separate, if that's not a separation of power. We're just asking them to implement the rules so that.
Yeah, I hear, I hear you, I hear your concern. I'm just, I'm just a. It's it's the law school, law school student in me asking. Uh any, any other questions, comments on S B two sixty-two? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh next up is S B two sixty-three. This is on um increases the rate of compensation and maximum allowable amounts. Case for court-appointed counsel in criminal proceedings. Uh first up on two sixty-three is uh Ronald. Uh Judge Ronald G. Johnson for the judiciary. Or maybe not, maybe somebody else. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Jennifer Along, and I'm the Staff Attorney for the Criminal Administrative Division. Um directly under Judge Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of the judiciary and Judge Johnson. Um we've, this is part of our judiciary package. Uh the testimony is pretty clear about the crisis that we are in uh right now. And I just wanted to uh take a moment to address something that was in one of the testimonies with respect to. Um the idea that individuals, if we do get this rate increase, that individuals may use this as their full-time. Job, uh and then be able to basically make way more than they could if they worked at the Public Defender's Office. That was from um. The Kauai prosecutors. When I first started uh with the judiciary, we had about fifty or sixty um court-appointed attorneys on our C felony list. Um there was probably about thirty to fifty on the Bs, maybe thirty on the As. Those individuals, we rotate them. So when we assign cases to people, we have a list and we go on rotation. No one individual is going to get um repeated cases from this if they get put on the list. They, we we are very diligent in how we uh uh appoint attorneys. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. That this is not gonna be a full-time uh job for some individual attorneys. Uh but I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Uh next is Darko Forester, Deputy Public Defender.
Hello, again. Again. So on behalf of our office, um we strongly, strongly support this bill. The court-appointed lists and available attorneys available to do court-appointed work has shrunk significantly. Over the past five to ten years. Um we have a crisis situation in Kona when it comes to available people willing to do court-appointed work. Um and there, we have different islands asking attorneys on other islands. Um the situation is critical, I would agree with that. Um and our lists continue to shrink. We now only have three attorneys on our juvenile list, and all three of those attorneys, attorneys are on the verge of retiring. And we simply cannot recruit attorneys, young attorneys, to join the list. So that they are willing to do these kinds of cases. Court-appointed cases are just as hard and sometimes even harder. Because a lot of times, uh the mentally ill clients that we service. Will go through several attorneys um before they find someone who they will listen to. And we rely on our court-appointed attorneys to handle sometimes the most difficult. Exasperating clients and help us navigate those clients to the criminal justice system. So we consider them partners when it comes to how we do our work and and in the administration of. Um justice in the criminal courts. They are utterly essential and they do need. Uh we need to be able to add young attorneys to these lists. Um who are willing and able and qualified to do this kind of work. Um nobody's gonna be rolling in the dough. This is about. Uh just basic being able to make a living. Um and uh the. Um, and uh the rates are just simply too low and have been low for too long and we ask you to please.
Thanks very much. Next is Addison Bulisong, Councilmember of on Kauai in support. Next is Rebecca Lee Kay, prosecuting attorney for. Kauai, sorry, sorry prosecutor, uh in support. Uh Mark Moore Kami, President Hawaii State Bar Association. Okay.
My chair, members of the committee, uh on behalf of the I'm the president of the Hawaii State Bar Association. Uh, which is about eighty eighty-three hundred members strong, all active, uh inactive, uh judges, et cetera. And the Hawaii State Bar Association uh strongly supports this bill. Uh, we do think it's overdue. Uh, and that the appointed counsel and their role in the criminal justice system is critical. Um, as we see more and more uh multi-party, multi-defendant um uh prosecutions with our. Uh, you know, as we develop uh from a rural community into a major urban center. Uh, these are gonna be more and more common and the public defenders have conflicts uh and the appointed council have have to um. Are critical to uh our government, our society's ability to handle crimes. And so uh our membership is um strongly in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Next is Richard Singh, uh Vice President for Hawaii Association of Criminal Defense Attorneys. Uh, in support, uh Carrie and Sharoda for the. American Civil Rights Union of Hawaii, also in support, Daniel Calamoto, uh attorney. Possibly online.
They're unavailable on Zoom here.
Okay, in support, Nono He Botello for Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform. Also in support, William Heflin for Hawaii for Hawaii County Bar Association. Uh, in support, James Tabe, maybe on Zoom. Oh, Mr. Tabe.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair, members of committee. It's been a long time since I appeared before this committee. Uh, I've been a quarter. I've been. A private sole practitioner for a year now, um after my retirement. Uh, and I've taken and I'm I just work part time and I've taken court appointed cases. I am one of the three attorneys uh Ms. Forster uh referenced uh out in Kapolei. I really wasn't planning on doing it, but uh I just felt like I needed to do it. The ages of the attorneys are I'm the youngest at sixty-two, one is sixty-eight and one is seventy-three. There is gonna be a problem uh uh and it's not limited just to Kapolei. The problem with Kapolei is that we don't get paid for travel time. So an attorney will have to uh. From town especially, it's probably at least an hour round trip commute. That's without traffic. Uh, so we the only way to attract more people, I would believe, is to increase this rate. Um, I know in town, I do appellate work. I get calls from Judge Johnson's chambers uh and I've have to turn them down all the time because I just can't um. Uh. It's just not worth my time to do the appellate work. It's difficult. And I do some. I have said yes to three of them. But there's quite a shortage. I know the Public Defender's Office helps out finding attorneys. Um, I just spoke to one of the uh felony supervisors and basically he tells me that. Attorneys know when when he's around, they know that they're gonna approach him for um. He's gonna approach them for uh to accept uh conflict cases and they. They kind they all just say, no, it's not worth it. So it's gonna there's gonna be a tie. It's already a crisis. It's just gonna get worse. Thank you. And I'll submit on my written testimony.
Thanks very much. Next is Ryan Ha in support, Georgette Yindal in support. Uh, William Bagasol in support, Dwight Long in support. And that's all the written testimony in SB two sixty three we have. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two sixty three? Seeing none, members questions?
Yes, for Mr. Tabe.
Go ahead.
Mr. Tabe, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Aloha. So I'm one of the um retired court appointed attorneys who do use to take felonies. And appeals. I'm the one of those that the judges would have to call when they couldn't find anybody else. Um, so but I'm retired. One of my concerns is. You can't even. Farm out ministerial stuff to paralegals. Because the law does not allow you to bill for paralegals. Is that right? So even if we pass this. Um, were you able to build for paralegals?
No, I I do everything myself. I I I'm just a solo. Yeah, I I work from home. I do this part time just to supplement my pension and uh that's all I do now. Just to these appeals, just uh kind of off question a little bit. Judge Johnson's chambers has called me on the same case weeks apart, begging me to take these cases and. And I just have to say no because I only want to work one at a time. So um.
Yeah. No, I know. I understand. I I used to get those phone calls too at night. A case, begging me to take a case, but um I'm retired now. But um. Maybe the judiciary should think about this, but I would suggest if they're gonna. Not raise court appointed fees, that they should at least pay for paralegals. So that for ministerial work, um we could at least be able to farm stuff out. But thank you, Mr. Mr. Tabe.
Okay, any other questions on SB two sixty three? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to SB two sixty four. This relates to the examination of criminal defendants establishes the amount of compensation for. Uh, private sector examiners who evaluate a criminal defendant's penal responsibility or fitness to proceed in a legal case. First up on SB two sixty four is um Judge Johnson, or is does it mean? Good morning again.
Morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Wong. I'm the staff attorney for the Criminal Administrative Division of the First Circuit Court. Uh, we for the most part stand on our written testimony. The only thing I wanted to kind of highlight was uh the fact that. Uh, we are looking right now, at least in the First Circuit, um at a an average of about nine. Um, examinations per month um for our six examiners. And it's not just the examination. When they go in and and conduct and they're appointed as our experts in these cases. They actually have to go in and it's a comprehensive review of the file. Um, medical records that are obtained by ACSB, medical records that may be uh in the custody of the Hawaii State Hospital. Or Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, um as well as police reports and such. So there's there's that comprehensive document review as well as the examination itself, the preparation of the report and then um. Coming and testifying if, in fact, the case ends up in a contested hearing. Uh, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Next is uh Behavior Health Administration for the Hawaii State Department of Health.
Hi, good morning.
In support. Okay, thank you. Darsha Forster, Deputy Public Defender. In support, okay. Uh, next is Councilmember Bulisong from Kauai, also in support, and Mark Moore Kami, Hawaii State Bar Association President. In support, okay. That's everybody who signed up for SB two sixty four. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two sixty four? And I don't see anyone on Zoom either. Any members, any questions on SB two sixty four? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to SB two sixty five. This relates to compensation for court appointed representation, increases the rate of compensation and maximum allowable amounts per case for court appointed counsel and guardians. Ad lightem and family court proceedings. First up on two sixty five is Darsha Forster, a public defender. In support, okay. Uh, Senior Judge Maderos for the State Judiciary. Or is it does it mean?
Hi, good morning. I'm Andrew Park. Uh, good morning, Chair Rhodes. Good morning, Vice Chair Gabbert, Honorable Members of the Committee. I'm Andrew Park. I'm a. Family Court Judge in Kapolei. I serve under Judge Maderos. So we wanted to stand on our written testimony and strong support. I had a chance to review. You know, their submitted testimony, those that were not in support were in strong support and. Uh, you you also heard from Deputy Public Defender Forster detailing the situation in Kapolei, which I think would fall in there this bill. Because those are cases that arise under five seventy-one and uh thank you to Mr. Tabe for comprising. Almost half of our panel of available attorneys. Um, I'll stick around for any questions that you folks may have.
Thank you. Uh, next is uh Director Ryan Yabani for Department of Human Services. In support, um Councilmember Bulisong from Kauai in support, uh Carrie Anne Sharoda for ACLU. Not seeing her, but she's in support. Um, Mark Moore Kami, President of Hawaii State Bar Association. In support, okay. Uh, Marilyn Yamamoto for Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform. In support, David Koila, Copper Executive Director for Legal Aid Society. Also in support, Nono He Botello for Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform in support. And Laura Miller in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two sixty five. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two sixty five? Seeing none, members questions? Um, maybe for Judge, uh was it Park? Um. So you said that there's there is a this this will affect what um. Uh, Mr. Talia was talking about in terms of the caseload out in family court?
Yes, so the um, chapter five seventy-one uh governs the prosecution of juveniles alleged to be law violators. And it's under that chapter um that we appoint attorneys to represent those individuals who cannot be represented by the public defender. So. Uh, this Senate bill um would change the rates and the cap for cases arising out of five seventy-one.
Okay, so it's but the but the guardian had the guardians ad litem side of it. That doesn't affect the criminal side. That's more of the.
That would be more for other types of cases.
More of the civil stuff.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Questions, members other questions?
Since you're here. I noticed that um. There's a separate bill. I mean, there's a separate amount for other than an attorney, which I'm assuming is to be like the guardian at Latin. Because this is under the Family Court Section five seventy-one. Why isn't there a and and I don't know because it's not my package. Why isn't there a similar amount in the criminal section so that they can have paralegals do? Ministerial work like calling for hearings, setting hearings up, setting up instead of charging the attorney fee time to go. You know, make sure the client shows up at court, that kind of thing.
You know, uh, all I can speak to that, Senator, is because I think that this bill in particular contemplates things such as guardians ad litem, which are not.
Yeah.
Typically utilized in the on the criminal docket. Um, but other than that, I don't have another answer for you on that. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Other questions on two sixty five? If not, let's go ahead and move on to SB two sixty six. This establishes one additional district court judgeship in the First Circuit, which is Oahu for those who don't know. Uh, first up on two sixty six is Melanie May or um Michelle Acosta, Deputy Chief Judge here on for the state of Hawaii. Good morning again.
Morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Michelle Acosta, Deputy Chief Court Administrator for the First Circuit. Um, we are requesting the statutory authorization to establish the fifteenth judge in the First uh Circuit District Court. Um, we did receive from the legislature appropriations for uh the salary for the judge in twenty twenty-three. And so we're now just looking for the authorization. I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you. Next is Sunny Ganadin, Office Public Defender. In support, okay. Uh, Mark Moore Kami, President of Hawaii State Bar Association. In support, um Bill Plum, Vice Chair, Collection Law Section of Hawaii State Bar Association. In support, Marvin Deng for Hawaii Financial Services Association. Also in support and Councilmember Addison Bulisong from Kauai also in support. That's everybody who signed up for SB two sixty six. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two sixty six? Seeing none, members questions? I don't have any either. Let's go ahead and move on to SB two sixty seven. This establishes one additional district court judgeship in the Third Circuit. And I always have to think about where the Third Circuit is. Big Island, right?
Big Island.
All right.
My district.
Because it used to be three and four and now it's only three and I just don't know. It's all confused. Um, first up on this is uh Robert Kim, Chief Court or Chief Court Administrator for the judiciary on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Corey Weinberger and I'm a staff attorney for the Third Circuit. I'm I'm testifying today on behalf of our Chief Court Administrator, Robert Kim, who could not be here today. Uh, we did support written test or we did submit written testimony and support um of this bill, but we wanted to just highlight a few items for the committee. Um, the creation of and funding for an additional district court judge in the Third Circuit. Is really critical to addressing the severe strain on the Kona District Court. Um, currently, a single dis- a single district court judge is sitting in Kona. Um, this one judge is tasked with handling approximately sixteen thousand cases annually. Um, this is really an overwhelming caseload that causes delays, inefficiencies. And really negatively impacts uh the court's ability to effectively carry out its um. Mission to administer justice to the public in a fair, efficient and accessible manner. Um, just by way of background, the first district court judge was sworn in in Kona nearly forty years ago. Um, back then, the population served by this court was just over twenty-three thousand residents. Since then, um the population of West Hawaii has nearly tripled to sixty-two thousand residents. And the judicial resources just have not paced with the population growth and caseload. So the addition of um a second district court judge in Kona uh would really. Help to ease the the extraordinary court congestion that we're experiencing here by dividing the caseload between two judges. Would reduce delays, um improve scheduling for litigants and the attorneys. Um, and ensure that justice is being delivered to the public fairly and efficiently. Um, so we therefore are requesting your support for this um vital request for the Third Circuit. Um, I do thank you for your time and consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions uh that the committee may have.
Great, thanks very much. Thanks for being here. Uh, next is Sunny Ganadin for Office Public Defender. In support, okay. Uh, Councilmember Bulisong from Kauai also in support, uh Mark Moore Kami, President of Hawaii State Bar Association. In support, okay. Uh, Bill Plum, Vice Chair for the Collection Law Section of the Hawaii State Bar Association in support. And Marvin Deng for Hawaii Financial Services Association, also in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB two six seven. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB two six seven? If not, members questions? I don't have any questions either. Um, if it's all right with everybody, we'll just go ahead and roll on into decision making. Any objections? Okay. Um, first up, we have SB ninety-four. This was relating to temporary restraining orders, increases the mandatory minimum jail sentence. For a first conviction of knowingly or intentionally violating a temporary restraining order from forty-eight to seventy-two hours. Um. Um, I'm concerned about the narrowness of it. It only it only applies to TROs. And the bill title itself constricts, uh doesn't allow me to amend it beyond that or allow us to amend it beyond that. And as one of the testifiers pointed out, there are several bills uh on this topic floating around. So this one I'm going to defer. Uh, next up is SB one one five relating to attachment execution of real property, increases the real property exemption amount for attachment or execution. Um. Recommendation here is to make the definition of head of family gender neutral and conform with the same-sex marriage law. Um, and then I'd like to make the amount for both classes ninety thousand dollars for simplicity and to reflect the fact that. Housing prices have risen risen much faster than inflation overall since this was last touched. So. Uh, it will be ninety thousand for both classes and um conforming amendments on the definitions. Anything else on that? Good, okay. Any questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbert for the vote.
Chair's recommendation on SB one fifteen is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes, aye. Senator Chang, aye. Senator Sanvano Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Awang.
Aye.
Senator Passus.
Thank you. Next up is SB one one seven. This protects individuals who make claims of sexual misconduct from defamation lawsuits. Uh, unless the claim was proven to be made with malice. Um. Recommendation here is I'd like to move it along and I there are some conception. recommendation here is, I'd like to move it along and I, there are some conceptual issues, um but considering the situation that these applies to, I think it's worth continuing to discuss. So I'd suggest we pass it out with a bad date, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. It's a single, so we'll go over to the House and we'll, maybe we'll see it back and maybe we won't. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB one seventeen, a recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments to the Members' President. Are there any no votes or reservations?
No.
No.
Two no votes, there are measure passes.
Next, next up is SB one twenty-one. This proposes an amendment to Article six, Section three of the Hawaii State Constitution to allow the Senate more time to confirm judicial appointments. Um the situation is, this is my bill, this is one we're trying, the situation I'm trying to address is uh multiple um special sessions during the summer to, and, and occasionally they'll be for one judge. So what this would allow us to do is um bunch the um the nominations into one special session, hopefully, uh and it will also um well, it's, it just costs money to have special sessions and it's hard to get senators back in the building sometimes because they have other jobs and other commitments and so like this just gives us a little more flexibility. So the recommendation is to go ahead and move it forward um and unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB one twenty-one is to pass unamended, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodside, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB one twenty-four. This also proposes a constitutional amendment. This one to specify that reapportionment should be based on the resident population as counted in the most recent decennial, decennial United States Census for the respective apportionment year rather than the permanent resident population. Um I don't know, this one probably is somewhat controversial. The reason I'm interested in it is because there are districts, um mostly on Oahu where uh the, the, the representatives and senators represent way more than anybody else does. And despite the fact that they're not being counted as um residents, they still have concerns that the elected officials from that area have to deal with. And it doesn't seem fair to me to have these vastly different districts. There are some precincts where the, the, the population is negative because of the way they pull out the, the uh non-permanent ones. So I understand the uh I, I understand why there are concerns about it, but let me, let me suggest that we move forward with it. Um I'd like to change the preamble to note that forty-seven states use residents instead of permanent residents. I, we had that wrong in the preamble to start with. We said forty-nine. And then we'll remove the most recent language that's suggested by the AG regarding which census we're referring to. So that's uh, that's, that's the recommendation. Any questions or concerns?
My concern is that this is gonna shortchange my district if this is passed. Um we're the fastest-growing district because we have the most affordable housing. And as the um one testified pointed out, we're already undercounted because the homeless isn't being counted as part of the, as part of the census. So I represent probably far more than some people here on Oahu. But um if this is passed, this is gonna for sure, shortchange my districts. For those reasons, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, other concerns? Okay, if not, Senator Gabbard.
Chair's recommendation on SB one twenty-four is to pass with amendments noting the no vote for Senator W- Wanda Ventura. Are there any other no votes or reservations?
No.
And a no vote for Senator Awah. The measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB one seventy-five, another unmet uh constitutional amendment to this one to Article six, Section three. This would increase the mandatory retirement age for state justices and judges from seventy to seventy-five. Uh the recommendation here is to pass with just technical amendments. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation is on SB one seventy-five is to pass with amendments. The Members' President, are there any no votes or reservations?
No.
Noting a no vote for Senator Awah, the measure passes.
Okay, and thank you. Next up is SB one seventy-three. This requires the judiciary to establish a three-year pilot program to provide free childcare services to minor children of parties and witnesses who are attending court hearings in the First Circuit, which is Oahu. Um so we, I suggest that we blank out the um per ways and means request, we'll blank out the appropriate appropriation to affect the effective date to April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven and note that the four hundred thousand dollar appropriate, well, note the four hundred thousand dollar appropriation request in the committee report. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB one seventy-three, recommendation to Chair is to pass with amendments. Members' President, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB two sixty-one. This increases the amount of each, amount each juror or prospective juror is paid for each day of actual attendance at court. Currently, it's thirty dollars. Um recommendation here is to go ahead and um we'll delete the uh we'll, per ways and means request, we'll delete the amount of the increase and the appropriation amount and we'll make the bill effective April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. That will note the deleted amounts and date in the committee report, but we'll state in the committee report that the, the, the proposed daily rate would be seventy-five dollars a day instead of what's in the bill now, which I think is fifty? Fifty? Yeah, so up it some more because because of inflation, because you don't want people to try to avoid jury duty if you can avoid it. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Uh on SB two sixty-one, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you, Members. Next up is SB two sixty-two. This authorizes the judiciary to determine the format of the juror qualification form and the means of delivery. This is a uh judiciary single. Um I, I would like to move it forward, but I'll I'll go ahead and put a bad date on it, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. Um I'd like to specify also that the method of delivery can vary and that attempts to contact any one juror may need to be made mo- more than once depending on the, the response to the first um attempt. And will also indicate um that this bill is not, we'll, we'll put this in the committee report, that this bill is not intended to have any effect on the, the actual questionnaire or the contents of the form. This is merely a delivery um, a delivery bill. So that will, that would be the recommendation. Questions or concerns?
Oh. Chair, I, I appreciate um your comments. That's gonna be the committee report. I'll still be voting with reservations. I don't like giving the judiciary carte blanche without um without rules being made up for the public to view and comment on.
Understood. Other concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-two, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, uh noting the reservations by Senator Sanwana Ventura. Are there any other no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB two sixty-three. This increases the rate of compensation and maximum allowable amounts per case for court-appointed counsel and criminal proceedings. Uh recommendation here is to blank the appropriation, to put in an effective date of April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven and note that the, in the committee report, that the total appropriation would be, that we're requesting is two point eight nine million. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-three, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations?
No.
Noting a no vote for Senator Awah, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB two sixty-four. This establishes the amount of compensation for private sector examiners who evaluate a criminal defendant's penal responsibility or fitness to proceed in a legal case. Uh recommendation here is to pass. Um we'll blank the appropriation, we'll note the increase of payment from one thousand to two thousand and total biennium appropriations of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the committee report. And we'll defect the effective date with the usual April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-four, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you, Members. Next up is SB two sixty-five. This increases the rate of compensation and the maximum allowable amounts per case of court-appointed counsel and guardians ad litem in family court proceedings. Uh the recommendation here is um actually, this does not have an appropriation, correct? My Moi is not here. It does. Okay, so we won't, we won't blank it out. We'll just pass it as is. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-five, the Chair's recommendations to pass unamended. Any no votes or reservations?
No.
Noting the no vote for Senator Awah. The measure is adopted.
Next, next up is SB two sixty-six. This establishes one additional district court judgeship in the First Circuit, and I believe this one has already been funded. Is that correct? Okay. Uh recommendations to pass as is. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-six, Chair's recommendations to pass unamended. Any no votes or reservations? Measure is adopted.
Next, next and last is SB two sixty-seven. This establishes one additional district court judgeship in the Third Circuit, which is Hawaii County. Um again, there's no money involved, so we'll just pass it as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB two sixty-seven, Chair's recommendations to pass unamended. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thanks very much. That concludes our business for today. See everybody on, on Thursday.